Yep.
Yeah. We've got what it was up there, yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
It's hard to get one.
Likes. If he likes it, then he'll go do it.
He helped us tear that. He helped us with the kind of media elbow labor.
We were standing several times today.
He just did a joke. He just did a joke.
Yep.
I see it from anywhere.
Right, so I need that. And then we took this for tonight.
And now he's taking a part in and moving on back. He really is something. So he can get those guys from him on down.
It's not that.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, yeah, that sounds like fun.
It is fun.
Did you guys have a good meeting?
Interesting.
Things are assessed?
Yep. Or will be.
Let's see, where is Maggie in this agenda?
I didn't even look that far.
Yeah, I think we're right on communication.
Oh, perfect. Steve, are you ready?
He will be in a minute.
No, I, I, I'm fourteen.
These are all done, yeah, you did all these.
Oh, I did them all, okay. You just wanted to be.
Ready?
I'm ready. I don't know, I take notes.
I?
Well, we're not on the recording yet, so that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Now I'm ready.
Eric, are you all set? You want me to wait?
I'll be ready in short order. So go, go right ahead.
Okay. Six thirty. It is six thirty-three in Reed Field, Maine, so I'll call this meeting to order and ask us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic number which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That wall is pretty white.
It looks good, but it's different. Okay, so just a reminder until we maybe approve something different tonight, but I announced this a couple meetings ago, so my recommendations for running meetings that are highly productive are the same, I'm just reiterating them for everyone who's listening. We're going to follow Robert's rules of order more closely than in the recent past. We asked that everyone be prepared by reading the entire packet before the meeting, to ask the town manager clarifying questions prior to the meeting via email, text, or phone, to be proactive, coming with solutions in mind and presenting positively, to utilize select board communication time for providing information on upcoming events, giving thanks and recognition. We'll utilize the future agenda items time for raising concerns about issues that could be discussed at a future meeting. And we already did the retreat, so we don't need to say that one again. So with that, we will move on to the first item of business, twenty-four zero twenty-eight, select board meeting minutes of July twenty-fourth and August twenty-first? Okay, so that shouldn't be in there, of August twenty-first, I thought so. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-first as in the packet.
Awesome. I have a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-first, is there any discussion? Yes, Carol?
One thing, I think, if memory serves me right, and maybe not, when it came to the school board selection, I think Sean made a motion, I thought I made the second, but it says Catherine does.
It was, it was me.
Was it?
Yeah, it was a very long pause.
Thank you.
So then I did it.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Feel free to jump in and second me anytime.
Thank you, Angelica, for another great job on the minutes. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to the second item, twenty-four dash zero one six, warrants six through ten, they've been, I'm in the wrong thing, never mind.
Warrants eleven through fourteen.
Eleven, always in the minutes. Warrants eleven through fourteen, which Sean did, and are these your last ones, Sean?
No, I have, I'm pretty sure Theresa told me I got one more to do next week.
Yes, you do.
And then Steve?
Not next, so I know.
Okay.
July through September, sorry. Yeah, so I've got one left. So I'm going to do warrants eleven and twelve first, they were for a total of fifty thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy cents, major pieces in there outside of, the regular was, we paid forty-five hundred dollars for Sexton training and another fourteen hundred dollars in truck repairs to the same truck that seems to always need repairs. So that was the highlights of warrant eleven and twelve, and I know that truck is a bane of contention, Eric.
Yeah, we're actually looking at getting an assessment from the maintenance guys about when and how we should sell it. We've probably, I mean, in the last six years, it's probably taken, you know, three to four thousand dollars a year on average for maintenance, and it's been, not, not light duty stuff, harnesses, depth, the thing is problems is depth system, Ford three-quarter ton, I'm not a fan. So we're going to look at maybe trying to get that sold and find something that doesn't have as many issues.
How old is that truck?
I think it's only about six years. Maybe seven?
Yeah, I think, I think it was a seventeen or sixteen.
Six or seven years, and it's three thousand in maintenance a year?
Yeah, no, it's, and we've been through the dealerships, we take it to the dealerships for service to deal with these issues, and it just seems to be, it's a, it's a losing proposition at this point, and it's quite evident, so we're looking to try to get some relief from the dealership by saying, what gives, here's our sales, here's our record of expenses, and see if they're willing to do anything for us, but more than likely, we're going to end up having to sell it and let somebody else deal with it, what is effectively a lemon, but it, it took, you know, two or three years before some of these issues started to show up in a significant way, and now here we are. But I will say, and just reiterate, this is not an issue with lack of maintenance from the, from the town, this is an issue with a defective vehicle.
Yep.
We'll want to be aware of the fact that new trucks are extremely expensive, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, so three to four thousand dollars a year doesn't sound all that bad, so.
We'll do the analysis.
We need perspective, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
Yep.
Can I just ask, should it, should we be going to the dealer, or would it be less expensive for like a private contractor, or maybe it's so specialized, that's not even an option, but just throwing that out?
Fairly specialized, you have to have the right computers and the right equipment.
I noted on these warrants, which we'll go back to now, we're on eleven and twelve, is that right, Sean? That they say underneath that we don't actually have to approve them, we just need to have public review, is that correct?
So these have been previously signed by the select board, typically, when you do your public review, you just have a motion to confirm the signatures.
Okay.
There's no harm in that.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there any further comments on our warrants eleven or twelve? Could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants eleven and twelve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further comment, seeing not all those in favor? Approved unanimously.
So warrants thirteen and fourteen to, oh, I just lost my page. In the sum of five hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-nine cents. The biggest portion of that is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to our RSU thirty-eight payment. There was some interesting payments in there, where's porta-potties payment, probably not as many people find that interesting, but that month, we were four hundred seventy-five dollars in porta-potties in the town of Reed Field, so it just seems like a lot of money for poop at the beach, so, and stuff.
Heritage days, too.
Yeah, there was an extra service fee in there.
Extra heritage.
I just wanted to let people know. There was also, we paid Cushing for some of the finished work that they've done, the ten thousand one hundred ninety dollars, and the town office was serviced for our emerging light system, which there were, I think there were six lights that needed battery replacements, some three hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
And a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in bond principal and interest payments for municipal bonds and firetruck bond, so, cool.
And that should be the last bond payment for the previous firetruck, so now we'll be quickly moving into the next one, but we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, that was fifty-two thousand dollars. And only four fifty-two in interest. Any comments? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Thirteen and fourteen?
Yep.
I make a motion to approve warrants thirteen and fourteen, as stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve the two warrants, is there any further conversation? Seeing not all those in favor? It is unanimous. Moving on, I'll go back to the correct agenda. We'll open select board communications, which will start with members of the board, moving on to staff for the town managers' report and the treasurer's report, followed by boards and committees, and we have people here tonight for that, and then public communication. Is there any member of the board who'd like to present any general information?
I, I just wanted to say, it was really great to see the homecoming game last week, and they, they won very well, seventy-three to zip, so. It was pretty decent to watch, and the kids all had a good time, so it was also unfortunate, but soccer was postponed due to issues with the fields and drainage, but there's definitely a lot of kids participating, and it's really nice to see.
That's great.
I have a small thing under communications and select board, and I guess I'm in charge of helping with communication, on the town homepage, where it has like things coming up, or dates and stuff you need to know, if I could ask if all those bullet points, if it could say what it is, and a date and a time, and if room, maybe where it is, because there's something about the Church Road meeting coming up soon, I think October second, but you have to like read way, like click on it and read like halfway down to find out the time, so it seemed like there was adequate room, like on the bullet point, before even opening it up, of what it is, what the date, what the time, and maybe where it is, would be really nice to just, quick communication, bullet point.
We'll see what we can do, the, the format's fairly rigid, once we get an agenda put up, it'll actually link to the agenda, so with the select board meetings, when you click on the calendar, it shows the agenda that's been created, but we haven't created the full agenda for that yet, so I think they'll take care of that particular issue, but I, I will look and see if there's any way to add more detail into some of those items, but we, we do have some limits with the, with the website, so, but I'll look at it, thanks, Carol.
Gotcha, thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to staff communications, starting with the town managers' report, but I just thought of something, for all the folks who are here, present, if you haven't signed in on the sheet in the foyer, if you would do that before you leave tonight, that helps Angelica with doing our minutes. Thank you. Eric?
All right, thanks. I just pulled up that Reed Field U page, but we'll, we'll see when we get there. I'm going to go back to my, my report. So I apologize, this is going to be a little bit lengthy, I'm going to try to move through it as quickly as I can, but we had a lot happen last month. Multiple projects have been moved forward over the past month. It's been very active with roadwork, with working on the website, working on projects with the library and, and, and other activities, so one that I'm really happy about is we're almost finished with our GIS mapping update, so the assessor and code officer worked together with, with me, and then our contractor who provides our GIS mapping services, and when we have all those things come together, we're going to have information on the website, so any realtor, any prospective resident, any homeowner, will be able to go to a, a website and click on their parcel and get all of the information, they'll see the overlays of, of, you know, if there's any zoning there, they'll be able to see what area photography looks like, they'll be able to see a photograph of their home, if there's one on file, they can see their current valuation, all in one spot, so this should help cut down on, on work for the town staff, but also add a lot of value for folks who want to find information about their parcel or prospective parcels, so that's really exciting. It's going to take some upkeep, but it'll be a great thing for us when it's done. I have addressed some overtime with staff and made schedule adjustments to minimize it, we did see some of that later in the summer, in part because people wanted to work when the sun was out, but in part, we just needed to tighten things up a bit, so I wanted to let the board know and the public know that we are keeping an eye on those things and keeping it to a minimum.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It was just in the paper the other day that minimum wage is going up in January, can you give us a report out on that at a future meeting, on how that will affect us?
Absolutely, yeah.
What's it going up to now?
Fourteen fifteen from thirteen eighty, because when Maine last approved the minimum wage hike, they put in a clause for cost of living increase equal to the, I don't want to say, is it the?
CPI.
CPI, Consumer Price Index. That's a little hard to budget for when we're budgeting a year in advance and it then shows up.
Yeah, I think we did, we did accommodate some increase in our current budget, so I think that we're, we're probably going to be okay, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, and I'll let you know what the impacts are.
Thanks.
Yeah. In August, I organized and held a meeting between the CEO, planning board chair, vice chair, town clerk, deputy clerk, and myself, to go over the application process, meeting planning, collection of fees, document management, minutes, and other procedural matters as a first step in trying to streamline, maybe not the first step, but a first step for me to get actively involved, in streamlining, streamlining planning board and Board of Appeals processes, so we're recognizing that we have to have more things electronically available, that we have to have better communication with staff, so we're actively trying to find value in that work that everybody can benefit from. I completed a fairly involved FOA request, and I appreciate the select board being responsive to that and helping get that information together, we actually have another one coming in very shortly here for a, something to do with a political party that was, I won't say misrepresenting, but there was some confusion about whether people were signing voter registration cards, or switching their, switching their voting affiliation, or signing a petition, things like that, so we're trying to deal with that stuff, and we don't get these things frequently, but it's always a good exercise to go through and make sure we're doing it properly, the policy on that is actually on the agenda tonight, so it's good timing for all of these things. I've begun working on issues of accessibility on our website and documents, it's going to be an evolved process, it's going to take some time, the first step was purchasing Adobe Pro document editor and creator, so now we have the ability to convert documents to readable form without having to go and, and do backflips online, it, it'll help in a number of areas, so that's a positive thing, but it's just one of several steps that we've taken over the last few weeks. In late August, I met with representatives from the meeting house to discuss their enterprise fund loan, planned restoration projects, potential expenses, excuse me, expanded use of the Vestry Building, and then their kind of interest in community involvement, some folks may know this, but we did, they do have an enterprise fund loan, which is a zero-interest loan, and they've used that to help remodel the Vestry, and in turn, that building is going to be available to the public, and perhaps even to the town for multitude of uses, so that'll be exciting, but it's something that we needed to discuss to make sure everybody was on the same page. Then we have approval for borrowing from the bond bank, and this is for the firetruck, I didn't mention that, but it's for the firetruck, and the rate that we're looking at is three point three two, that might go up, but it's probably not likely to go up much, so I think that we're going to be a full, you know, half percentage point less than what we had anticipated when we, when we were looking, maybe even a full point, at town meeting in June, so we're, we're getting very close to securing that borrowing through the, the process where they send the, the bonds out for purchase, and the rate's going to be good, I'll just say that in a nutshell.
Eric, does that relate to the last item that you put under other, of needing to sign the bond again?
Yes, so our bond agent misrepresented. Yes. So, our bond agent misrepresented, or mis, not misquoted, there was a discrepancy between the text and the number. One said 6%, one said 6.5% as the maximum interest rate that we would pay, both of which are moved because we're gonna see a rate that's closer to 3.5%. But he wanted to make sure we had 100% compliance on that, and there were no issues. So, he just wanted us to sign that. And it's something we can just do as a matter of administrative expediency. So, yes, that's correct. Roads, traffic, parking, and safety. Matt and I met with an engineer and reviewed the drainage issues on Plains Road, and I did subsequently contract with them for preliminary design services and watershed modeling. So, this is important. This is something we haven't really done in the past in a big way, is looking at the drainage uphill, looking at the whole watershed if need be, but essentially finding out what the flow is that's projected and making sure that our culverts are the right size. Plains Road has been one of those areas where we've had chronic problems. I can't tell you, I've probably three, four times I've been on that road and you see a culvert that's sticking up in the driveway like this because it got undercut and then blown out. We need to do better there. And the last two storms, December and April, have again reiterated that. So, we're taking a more proactive approach, getting some engineering guidance, and that's gonna help us when we put an RFP out, get better results that last and save taxpayers money. So, that's the idea there. Roadside mowing and brush clearing are upcoming priorities. We did have a very productive road committee meeting last week, and we had the pleasure of meeting with a prospective new member. I'm really excited to see new people interested in that committee. And one bullet I didn't put on here that I need to, and I forgot, was that we do have an upcoming meeting for the sidewalk on Church Road. It's been in process for several years. October 2nd, 6:30 PM, right here, this building, we will be having a public hearing to discuss that. It's not going to be hosted by the select board, but they're welcome to attend, and the public is certainly welcome to attend. We have some new plans that show a couple of different variations on the same revised plan. That needs, I think, almost every community concerned that we heard as far as access, avoiding impacts on property owners dealing with drainage, having good sightlines. All of those things, I think, are at least looked at and hopefully addressed. Moving on to town property, we are continuing to wrap up activities at the beach. It was a good season. I met with the beach superintendent. We talked about the season. We talked about next season. We've done some purchasing for materials and equipment to help with the closeout this year and to prepare for next year so we can have an even better season. We have been making gradual improvements at the beach, but it needs more attention. We need to spend more time down there with maintenance, the buildings particularly. But to that end, and related to this, I did have a meeting with a representative from Alpha One, which is a design engineering firm. They specialize in accessibility, and so we were able to get some insight from them about how we might want to revise our layout at the facility, and how we can make the whole beach area, everything from the picnic areas all the way down to the water, more accessible. And we have done some good things there, and we have some opportunities, but of course, there's more to do. So, I'm excited about that, because that was one of the things we committed to when we got our new beach ordinance. We said accessibility is important, and the age-friendly group's gonna help with that. So, I'm glad to hear. We received an invasive plant management plan for the town farm forest. So, that was the one that we had received a small grant for. Grant funds will be forthcoming now that we've paid for the plan. It does identify native species and give us some idea of how to remediate them. The conservation commission will be talking about that, and we'll work with them going forward. And the last item I have isn't directly related to town property, because it's town-wide, but we did finally receive the wetlands maps for vernal pools, which are seasonal wet areas throughout town. And this is an important environmental consideration, and it's been several years in the process. I think it might have even started seven or so years ago, but we're finally on the cusp of that. And we are gonna get a copy of that for our website, so we can put it up with the other GIS data. Maintenance. Contract work at the library is essentially complete. We did have to do some rework there, but the front stairs are completed. Less, we need to do some more work on the handrails to make them stiffer, and the back entrance is done as well. Next steps on that will be undertaken with town staff and some volunteers to do improvements to the inside of the building. Really, the exterior work was what the contractor had done. Town staff volunteers will be working on the interior with the goal of getting that finished in mid to late December.
And I believe Steve was very excited about the demolition aspect.
Yeah. Yeah, there's plastic with your name on it, buddy.
That was November to be ready for the tree lighting, not December.
Sorry. Yeah, mid to late November. Excuse me. Yep. And so, and then moving on to Gile Hall, the work on the stage is pretty well complete. We did that for access control for the back room, where we have thousands and thousands of dollars worth of equipment. It also gives us a larger area for screen. So, when we get a better projector, the one we have now is probably 25 years old, we can provide better public meetings, have more clear numbers, bigger numbers. Again, part of the accessibility trend in just doing things better. Moving on to the transfer station, we have an ongoing staffing disruption. We will unfortunately see that continue for a few more months. We'll maintain coverage there, but folks should expect to see new faces. And we're just pulling people from different directions to try to minimize impacts on other areas of town operations. We'll make sure things keep going, but it'll look a little different. We did have an issue at the transfer station, not maybe a month ago now, where we had a patron with really inappropriate behavior. We did an investigation. So, after the investigation was done, a resident from Fayette was asked to not return to the facility for three months because they were swearing at staff, swearing, you know, loudly and yelling and driving recklessly in the facility, almost hitting one of the staff members. So, we just said enough's enough. We've had issues in the past. So, just a reminder, it's open air, but please just be kind, be patient. It's not the kind of place where you wanna be doing this stuff. If it happens, there will be consequences. So, please be kind. And let's see, while we did not receive much wind or much rain from the last storm, I do wanna remind folks that we accept brush at the transfer station. So, if you have something in your yard that needs to be taken care of, we accept that at the transfer station. Two exceptions, we don't take whole trees or large chunks of trees. We're not there to process your firewood, although if you wanna drop some off for the wood heat program, that's cool. But also no rotten wood. If you got a tree that blew down and it looks like styrofoam, we don't want that. It's not what the chipper goes to biomass. They don't want that stuff, and it just mucks up the ground. So, that's my report. There we go.
I have one question, Eric. We had, the select board had made a motion at our last meeting to take action with legal counsel on a land use violation. Is there an update on that?
Yes, that action has been taken. So, we did submit a letter to the property owner last week, early in the week, and we have had no response to date. But the code officer will be following up on that later this week or early next, as that term that was offered as a grace period expires. So, again, folks are expected to be managing their property in a way that doesn't adversely affect their neighbors. That doesn't always happen. When it doesn't happen, sometimes the select board has to get involved. So, we don't want to be going to court, but if someone's effectively using their property to abuse a neighbor, there's state statute that prohibits that. There's town statute that prohibits that. And unfortunately, we have a case where that just hasn't been heated. So.
Thank you.
To clarify.
Yes.
I don't wanna be ambiguous, any more than I have to. All right. Thanks, Catherine.
Yep.
Okay. Treasurer's report. I'm just gonna roll into that unless there's any questions from the board. This is a new format. Some of the basic information is the same, but I have modified it slightly. I try to reflect more relevant information in a different way. I'll just start and say this is for the month of August. Our accounts are in balance and through the 31st, and it should say 2023, not 2022, that's a typo. We did recently invest a million dollars in laddered CDs and SEDARs. So, these are investment tools that allow us to put money in a high-interest earning account for terms of 3, 6, 9, 12, 15 months, and we have done that. We're looking at adding one more step, one more tier to that ladder, and making sure that we can invest and get a good return on that money when it's sitting in the bank, which we do have an obligation to carry well over a million dollars, I think it's up to two depending on the budget, in reserves. And so, that money can be applied for various investments. We're preferring right now at this point to invest in safe investments, which are the CDs. We're getting 4.5%, 5% on some of these. And so, we try to balance out the money that's in those investments with cash on hand. So, right now, we are looking at another, again, as I said, $250,000 with Northeast Bank to either put it in a high-yield interest account, a savings account that we can pull the money out at any time, or we may be looking at another CD. But I'm just trying to make good use of the town's money so we can get returns and not have it just sit there. With respect to the audit, the fiscal year '23 audit is fully underway. We had a great meeting with the auditors for two days. They were here doing fieldwork. We've had correspondence. We've provided documentation to them, and we very much are on track. This is probably my mid-December number that I was thinking about. We do expect to have a first draft of the audit by then. So, that's gonna be a positive change for us. In the past, we've been anywhere from February to April before we have a draft of the audit. That will help with budgeting and help us move forward within the formed process. General comments on the month of August. We do expect that revenues and expenses should be around 17%. That's a perfect number. It's, that's equal to 2/12, 1/6 of what our budgets are, so it never really lands there. Journal entries are higher than what we've seen in the past. Journals are what we use to track our financial activity. Part of the reason for that is we have had more activity as a result of the transition in the accounting structure. So, we've had to do some adjustments there, budget adjustments for that. Also, we have been making deposits and withdrawals for those CDs and SEDARs that I mentioned earlier. So, that money is recorded moving through our general fund balances. As far as year-to-date numbers go, real estate payments are on track. We do see that interest on taxes are up for the month, but they're really as expected for the year-to-date, so there's no surprise there. Motor vehicle payments are up 19% for the month of August, but they're still down for 10% by 10% for the month, for the year-to-date. What that means is that July was a really bad year for motor vehicle sales. That had me worried last month, but the recovery we saw in August is encouraging, and that's a good economic sign if motor vehicle sales stay steady. The last thing I wanna mention is transfer station revenues. This may be in part related to the staffing shakeup that we've had, but we're down 50% for both the month and the year-to-date. And that's something that last month I was like, well, maybe it's a fluke. Seeing it again this month, I'll be meeting with transfer station staff to talk about it, try to figure out what's going on, talk to the finance officer. There might be a reason for it, but it's always concerning when you see those type of revenues. And again, this is just for things like demolition debris, if you bring in a crib or a mattress, things like that. So, it's not the overall financial picture, but it's a little piece of it that I track to give an idea of the economic health of that operation. So, with the report, I did break it up a bit. We have general activity, key income indicators, and then also major net expenses. Two criteria for general activity, one being the checking account balance, the other being posted journals. I did talk about the reason the journals are a little bit different this year, this year-to-date. The checking account is also addressed, but that's because of the activity. We pulled a million dollars out, and that's now in, still within town control, but it's not in our inter-schulken checking account. The other piece that's changed is we pulled out $600,000 or something thousand for the firetruck. So, you add those two numbers together, and we're within a couple hundred thousand dollars of where we normally would be. So, that's the reason for that variation between that last year and this year. Moving on to key income indicators, real estate payments are about on track. We're seeing a small difference on the monthly basis. Year-to-date, we're only down 0.2%. So, we're pretty well on track there. Interest on taxes, fairly large difference on the month-to-date, but again, year-to-date, we're not far off. Total receipts, this is where we kind of look at all the money coming in. Those are very much on track, and that's another, a good way to see where we are as we look at the receipting, the money coming in, which is different than revenue, but I won't get into that. Motor vehicle payments, another good indicator. We're up 19% as I noted, 10% for the year. And then transfer station fees, I talked about those already. Major net expenses, I'm looking at the expenses on a budget versus actual basis, as opposed to the revenue lines, which I'm looking at a year-to-year comparison. I find it is more helpful for me, and hopefully for the board, to look at it that way, because expenses are more stable than the revenues. So, I find it valuable to look at it this way. Again, if the board would like to see something different, let me know. I can do anything you want as far as reporting, but this is just an attempt to make the report more efficient and concise. But what you'll see is most of these aren't far off from that 17% number I listed. You do see some big numbers in Parks and Rec. That's in large part because we have, July and August are the two busiest years, busiest months for the beach. So, we will see a big lump there. Also, fall soccer. We have a lot of expenses that come for soccer and other things like that that get started that time of year. So, those two I mentioned, and that's really the summary of my report.
Very well done. Thank you.
All right. And I think I probably took about 20 minutes on all that, so I'm sorry.
You went over. Yep.
Yeah.
It's good at good.
25. We'll just schedule that a little longer at future meetings, so, because you, like, we're speed-talking anyway.
Well, this is like the once-a-month meeting, and it really kills us. So, I'm looking forward to getting back to twice a month.
There we go.
Me too.
Okay. Moving on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments, we had minutes submitted from the planning board and the Board of Appeals. So, thank you to the Board of Appeals for their August meeting minutes, and the planning board, two from July and one from August. I really appreciate them coming in timely. So, that's really good. I'll get there. And now, we're gonna hear an update from the Age Friendly Committee. And Eric, I think you are being requested to do a screen share?
Yes.
In a little bit.
In a little bit.
Okay. So, if you could just introduce yourself, please, for the audience?
Yes, I'm Maggie Edmondson. I'm co-chair of the town's Age Friendly Committee. My other co-chair, Elaine Katz, is right here, and long-term committee member, Mary Ann Perry, is also with us. So, I'm gonna start by briefly sharing with you some of the activities of the committee, and then move on to speak at more length about Reedfield U, which is a major annual undertaking for us. Our town's Age Friendly Committee is part of a network of such committee in communities across the state. Our aim is to help our towns to become more livable for older residents, which at the same time helps people of all ages. Now, you may be familiar with AARP's eight domains of livability. I did put a little sheet at each of your places, just as a reminder. So, I'm gonna look at the committee's activities according to those domains. So, under number one, outdoor spaces and buildings, the committee has been working and will be continuing to work on accessibility at the fairgrounds and at the beach. We've written and received grants for seating and accessible picnic tables and so on. We know that accessible bathrooms in town is a need, so we have that marked in our heads to work on. Number two, transportation. We worked with the town to bring neighbors' dry We worked with the town to bring neighbors-driving neighbors to Reedfield, knowing that transportation is a big issue for elders and a major concern for being able to continue to live here as we age. Number three is housing, which is a very large and complex issue. What we do know from our surveys is that many of us want to stay in our own homes here as long as possible, and also that there is a need to be able to downsize as we get older and have suitable housing available. This is currently difficult to do in Reedfield. As a way of helping people stay in their homes, we've set up a handy helpers program with volunteers to do small, unskilled jobs around the house, to deliver sand buckets in the winter and so on. Our latest handy helper is one for tech and computer needs. We've also worked with Red Cross to install free smoke alarms in homes, and a couple of years ago brought a display of adaptable living aids to the library for a period of time for people to try out. Number four, social participation. We were involved in restarting the senior café this past year and collaborated with the library to keep it going over the summer, and this is ongoing work. There'll be more about social participation. And number five, respect and social inclusion, when I get to Reedfield U. Number six in the domains is civic engagement. I think actually most of our committees and active volunteers in town are older people. Our committees, our committee, Age Friendly, sends representatives to various other groups in town, such as the Fairgrounds Committee and the Heritage Days Committee. Also, we regularly solicit volunteers on election days by setting up a table at the polling station where we also pass out information. Number seven, communication and information. It's definitely a challenge to reach everyone. I think every committee in town has found that. We do have a resource list available on a card with a magnet that can be attached to a fridge. We've also been talking about trying to set up a calling list for people who live alone or who may not see things posted online. And bridging from that into number eight, community and health services, I know we have a concern about emergency response capabilities in town and about having a well-publicized warming center available in the winter. What we have been able to do so far is to help with the social aspects of health. We have done more and more collaborating with the library, especially this past year, cosponsoring programs and helping each other in various ways. We're also collaborating with them to put together welcome packets for new residents of all ages. We've had conversation with the Vestry about future possibilities, and we really welcome opportunity to collaborate with other groups in town. So that gives a brief overview of some activities, but I also want to share with you in a little more detail about Reedfield U., which is a significant, ongoing program undertaken by the Age Friendly Committee. Reedfield U. stands for Reedfield University. The university part is meant to be interpreted in a lighthearted way, but indicates that it consists of informative classes and presentations. The program was initiated in 2020, but was cut short because of the pandemic. This year, we were able to run the whole program and hope to continue with it each year. Reedfield U. is a community-building event focused on one particular month, the month of March, when we've all had enough of winter. It offers opportunities to be together as a community in a way that helps us get to know one another better. It showcases the talents and the skills of community members of various ages and adds vitality to our community. So often, we focus on the needs of older people, and we forget that they, I should say we, are such a rich source of knowledge and skills. And while this isn't the primary focus or purpose of the project, it is part of the reasoning behind our committee sponsoring it. Now, it's based on a model that's been working well for several years in the small Vermont community of Bethel. Community members offer classes, programs, workshops, informal meetups, free of charge during the month of March, which anyone can attend. It might be an academic subject, art, some kind of craft, music, or a travelogue with pictures. So here are some that we've offered here in Reedfield. Geology of the Reedfield area. Reedfield history. Maine wildflowers. Genealogy. How to play Mahjong in Canasta. How to solve the New York Times crossword puzzle. A writing workshop. A hands-on in caustic painting class. Learning how to do iris paper folding, knitting, and other crafts. There were some more personal gatherings, such as one about a woman's journey with breast cancer, and another on the ability of music to reach a person with autism. Travels in the South Pacific. Immigration in Central Maine. Our town's comprehensive plan. And we've had participation from the Kennebec Land Trust, Neighbors Driving Neighbors, the Union Meeting House, and the library. So that just gives an idea of the range. And with each presentation, there's always time for socializing. This year, we had 16 different classes. Some were series. Seventy people registered for them, with many of those attending multiple presentations, and some people simply turned up on the day without registering. Originally, we were going to end the month with a potluck celebration, but we weren't confident it was yet time in the pandemic to try that this year, but we may add that in the future. The program has a website, and if Eric is ready, maybe you could pull that up for us?
Yes, I can see. Is this the town?
ReedfieldU.org.
Okay, I was looking at the town.
Okay. If we do do that potluck, it would be a great time to share the experiences that we've had during Reedfield U. Perhaps show or demonstrate things we've learned, show our paintings, creations, and just generally celebrate the experience. So yes, we do have a website. I'm hoping we can go through the various pages. The opening one just tells you basically what I've just told you. It's an overview. It's an invitation. Hopefully, it's an appealing invitational page.
You should be sharing now.
Thank you. Great. So that's the opening page. And that gives the basics of what Reedfield U. is about. If you could go to the second page?
Excuse me. Bill, is it possible to take the banner off of the screen that the audience is seeing?
No.
No?
Don't believe so.
That dialogue box.
That giant dialogue box?
It's not showing up on my screen. It's just this.
I can hear.
On this screen?
Just the meeting is being recorded, that one.
That big, this meeting is being recorded, the Zoom box in the center?
Ah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is the opening page, the second page, if you could pull that up, Eric. The second page merely reinforces the idea that this is all done on a volunteer basis. Everything is free to attend. The third page lists all the classes for the year. You can call up the third page. Says classes and presenters. So that has all the classes for the year with the dates, times, locations. And toward the bottom of that page is brief information about each of the presenters. The next page is, sorry, I'll give you time to go down.
No, it's running. Your calendar events.
The next is the calendar page, showing the scheduling calendar format, for those who prefer to see it that way. I doubt that anything is showing right now because it always pops up as September. But that does show at the time. Then the registration page is the next one. Now, that offers a variety of ways for people to register. We know not everybody is comfortable with computers, but they can use the form that's right there on the webpage. They can send an email to ReedfieldU@gmail.com, or they can send something via surface mail. And they always receive an acknowledgement that their form has been received. The next page gives addresses for the locations used. We only used three locations this past year. And then there's a page for people to contact us with details of a presentation they'd like to offer, what times would work for them, if they have any particular tech or other needs, how long the class will be. In other words, all the details that we need to know and that they would like us to know. There's a contact us page linked to our Gmail. And finally, there is a gallery which has photos from the various classes, taken with people's permission. So I'll let that come up. So what did Bethel, Vermont discover from their experience? They found that it grew from a local experiment to a region-wide attraction with hundreds of people attending. They found that it helped small businesses reach new customers and showcase their offerings. It offered free community learning. It encouraged people to visit Bethel and see what it had to offer. It increased the sense of community and of neighbors knowing one another. And we saw that starting to happen here this year. And one of the reasons I'm talking with you about it today is to share with you the vision of how Reedfield U. benefits the Reedfield community. We hope this program will be more and more on the Reedfield Town radar and that perhaps people will start thinking ahead to how they might participate and contact the program to make suggestions any time of the year. So thank you very much for this time for us to update you on our activities.
That was phenomenal. Wow.
So Catherine, I do want to pass around something that the town received from AARP, recognizing the Age Friendly Committee for their work. All that stuff that they just talked about didn't just happen because of one of the people. It was a dozen or more over the course of several years working to make this happen. And this recognition is one of a full planning cycle. So the fact that they started beginning to work towards becoming an age-friendly community and have completed a full round of review, reflection, improvement. So I just wanted to pass that around so the whole board could see it. And just, it shows up in our box in cardboard, but it means so much to the community to have these folks doing this wonderful work. And just, you can see from the presentation how much really has been done. And I have every expectation that we're going to continue to see this level of production and more from this committee because they're just dedicated. So thank you from, you know, from me to you, anyway.
Yes, Mary Ann, you have to go to the podium. You have to go to the microphone. Well, you don't have to talk, but if you do, yes, at your age.
I just briefly want to thank Maggie. She's the one who got the program going for Reedfield. And she spent an awful lot of time researching and setting up the TV, you know, network and everything. But she was the one who knew about it, introduced it, and made us follow her. No, we were all very enthusiastic about it, and I think it's a great program, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
I am Gloria by guest chair. How well it's put together and how comprehensive it is. Just a quick question. You said you guys have welcome packets. Is that already in the works or something you're putting together?
It's in the works. We're gathering stuff together. We're hoping to get items from the various businesses and the various committees in town.
Thank you. And that's why I was asking, because I was cleaning up part of my personal assignment was to clean up the current list of businesses, which a lot of, several of them are out of date. Yeah, I would love to maybe talk.
Yeah, and we were anticipating that they'll be available at the town office, that that's how they will get passed out. So we'll put them together and have them available here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Nice job.
I have one comment, and I don't remember who made it. It was not me, but somebody said that let's remember that Age Friendly isn't just for seniors. It's for all ages. And it was very poignant in the conversation we were having. I don't, I think it was around an accessibility issue, but that there are young people who have those same issues. And we're very thankful for everything your committee does for our town. This is really phenomenal. Okay. Moving on, we have public communication now set aside 10 minutes. If there are any members of the public present online or in the room who would like to address the select board on an issue that's not on the agenda. Yes, you must come to the podium, introduce yourself, please, so that all of our listeners and the recording can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Landrum, and on the 24th of last month, I submitted my application to help hopefully with the Fairgrounds Committee. And I thought that today or tonight, there would be some decision made. And I guess I found out that it wouldn't be tonight, and I'm not sure when it will be. But I just wanted to introduce myself. I had already taken the time off of work to be here tonight. So I decided, well, I'm going to come anyway. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm very excited about the possibility of helping out with that board. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at my application. I come from a Maine master gardener training background since 2011. I also have a permaculture landscape design certification and on the Kennebec Valley Garden Club. So I'm especially interested in the whole pollinator need. And at Reedfield Heritage Days, I was even asked by a member on that committee to apply, and so I did. So it was nice to be invited. And we also have a small lavender field here in Maine. So I just wanted to introduce myself. So I'm looking for it, and I don't know if it's allowed. That was my question for this meeting, is may I go to the committee meeting on the 21st if I'm not yet on the committee?
Absolutely.
Well, all meetings are public, but that doesn't mean that you can participate. So, just like here. Well, no, not duct tape, but if they have a public input time, then that's when the public can participate. But anyone can go to any meeting.
All right.
Great. Eric, where are we at? I think we were waiting for like a full 30-day period.
Yeah, so the reason we didn't do the appointments is because we had just announced at the last select board meeting that there would be a vacancy. And so we wanted to leave time for folks to hear about it and express interest.
So I would expect that it'll be on our next meeting, which is October 279. Is it the 10th or is it the 16th? I think it's the 16th of October.
It is the 16th, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Can we just finish with public communication, then we can do that? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? I don't see anyone online raising their hand. Okay, so Carol, a quick question, and then we'll move on.
I thought the committee things were considered, like the meeting after it was submitted, if there was an opening in the committee. So I hear you thought, you should go by, but there were also two openings. but there were also I think two openings. So I'm interested right away. So is that not the policy to have it, the board meeting after someone submits the application? I thought that was the way that it was.
I don't understand your question. Sorry.
So I thought when someone submits an application for an open committee seat, that it's discussed and voted on the meeting after they submit that. And I guess you submitted that sometime in August. So tonight would have been like under our guidelines, I guess, on committees tonight, but it wasn't. So am I misunderstanding the guidelines? Or I know something about 30 days and allowing time for people to consider that there was an open seat and there was an interested party and there was another open seat.
There's only one open seat.
But there was two citizens.
No.
It was the select board seat that was vacated when Dennis wasn't reelected. That was the one that the committee put up, right, Steve?
Yeah, that's the only seat.
Did you guys talk about like a citizen and a student and all that? I thought there was two.
The board only voted for one.
No, we only voted for one.
So it will be in October. So I guess my thought from the concern is you're talking about the plan being done in January to be early next year to be voted on in June. So it's important that we can have the [inaudible]. But the next way to [inaudible]?
Well, I think the hope was just to make sure that anybody that had interest, I mean, it was only, when we set the agenda, we had just got the, yeah, thanks for using that word for me. We just got the application the day before when we set the agenda, and we thought, well, it's probably a little too.
You said it for this meeting?
Yes.
But she submitted it in August, so why not?
It wasn't in August. Well, we didn't put it out until late August.
When did you submit it?
The 24th. Is that when we put it out? Yeah. So.
Okay, well, so there we are. We'll look into that in the future to make sure that if there is a policy, we have followed the policy. And if we don't have a policy, we should probably establish that in the policy.
Yeah.
I thought that was, but I appreciate that.
Great. It looks to me, I know we have someone waiting online for a liquor license, which is part of new business. And we also have the town assessing agent here. Would anyone mind taking those items out of order since we're running about 10 minutes behind?
We should definitely take those out of order.
Okay. And the one for Mr. Ledoux was first. So I would suggest that we move to item 34-033, Consider Assessing Agreements with David Ledoux and with Dirigo Surveying. Eric, can you introduce this item for us, please?
Sure, very quickly, two separate items here. First is our regular assessing work, the work that David has done for us for the past three years, I believe. We haven't updated the agreement, but we thought that with the revaluation process, it would be a good time. So this agreement keeps the current terms, updates the service agreement, and keeps the same fee structure that we currently have. So that is for our standard assessing services. And this one, I think, should be an easy go. The other item is the contract for revaluation for the town. What we're looking at doing, and we've been probably close to 20 years, but by the time we finished this, if not a little bit more, since we did our last revaluation. We have been working on that intermittently and really every year. So we're not terribly out of date. We're consistent with the state, but it's time. We finally found a point where we believe property values are starting to stabilize a little bit, and that is our first window. We haven't been able to do this just as nobody else has for the past few years because the prices, the market's been too volatile. So we are at a time when we need to do this. We're at a time when we can do this. And we have a tremendous resource in-house with David Ledoux and the company that he is a principal of. So I want to be very clear that the proposal that we have today is for a company that our current assessing agent is a partner and is a principal of. It's himself, his wife, and some family members. And I just want to be clear about that because I don't want anybody thinking that this is something that we're trying to just push through or hide. It's really important to consider the fact that David does our assessing work for us, the people that he's working with. One of them worked for us before, his wife Kathy. And the folks that he has coming onboard with the rest of the group are skilled folks that understand assessing, property valuation. And so there's value, and we're looking at a good team. What should be considered is that we're not doing this by bid. Normally, we might go out and do a bid for an RFP for assessing services. But in negotiating with David and his other folks on his team, we're realizing that we're getting a value by working in-house. Part of that value is that Dave already knows, and Kathy already knows a lot about our property, a lot about our residents. So we have some familiarity there. They will be efficient in what they do. That's reflected in the pricing we've received. We're getting better value per parcel than other towns in the state that are larger than us. So I don't want anybody to think that this is just something that was just negotiated and we're paying an inflated price. That's not the case. We're doing this because it's a value. We're at least proposing it. It's up to the board to decide. The Board of Assessors did discuss both of these agreements briefly at their meeting this evening, and we're comfortable with moving forward, by my understanding. And so what we have are, again, two contracts, one for a one-year agreement with David Ledoux himself as our assessing agent, and one for four years that covers the revaluation of the town and things like looking for errors and omissions, things that might have been missed, new value. We'll get a new schedule as far as the overall value for different neighborhoods and for the types of structures and the types of components of structures. They'll be looking at even, are we assessing the first floor of a two-story home correctly? So this isn't a full reevaluation, but it's very, very close. The one thing they won't be doing is going and measuring every single parcel. If they see something that looks funky, they'll take a look. They'll correct that. They'll be doing the same public outreach that we would expect, meeting with residents who have concerns and questions, following up. And town staff will be assisting with this to make sure that we have good communication. But that's my nutshell of this. And I certainly recommend that we move forward with both of these, but I'll let the assessors maybe chime in, and then I guess Dave can come in and add anything I missed.
I would just say I've been in my second year in the assessors' meetings with David, and he knows our town. I think he's really kind to residents, very understanding, tries to be fair. I hope anybody else has a comment, but can I make a motion? Do you accept?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept the contract with David Ledoux and Dirigo Assessing for one for one year and another for four years.
Just a point of clarity, should we take those separately?
I think we should, right? Because the one for one year is just David, right? And then the other one is David Ledoux and his company.
So if you make one motion, then when we decide that, then you can make the next one.
I'd like to make a motion with David Ledoux for the length of one year for assessing local properties.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept the proposed contract with David Ledoux for being the town's assessing agent. Is there any discussion? I have a question. I already know the answer, but I want it on the record. I just have to tell you that, so.
When I had students like you in my class, I used to hate that. That's a question they already knew the answer to. It's driving me crazy.
Eric, this contract is for $500 a day. And is that the current contract rate also?
That is the current.
So there is no cost increase?
No, but we'll talk about that when we do the budget next year. Getting skilled professional services like this. We're also, again, I mean, some places might be paying less, but we're getting a tremendous value for what we're paying. We're paying less than some other towns, more than a few others. But I think that even finding someone to do this work is challenging. So again, I feel comfortable with that price, and I think it's a good value for us.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're going to consider it during the budget process because all town employees have been getting some form of increase over the last two years, especially given the way the economy has been changing. And I just want us to consider that in all contracts that we make with everybody, so that it's fair.
So you want to raise then?
No, I want to see. If a raise is warranted, yes, I do. Because I think we need to treat everybody equally, not with the same dollar amount, but with the same consideration, so.
I think his familiarity makes him more efficient than some that come in cold.
Absolutely. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. David, I probably should have invited you to come up, but are you happy? Okay.
You want to make another motion?
Yes, please.
I'm going to make a motion to accept Dirigo Assessing for a term of four years in local assessment.
Second.
We'll give it to Steve. I have a motion in a second to award the contract for revaluation services to Dirigo Assessing Group LLC. I have a couple of questions. Do we need to suspend any sort of legal process because we're not going out to bid?
Yes, my recommendation is that the board would suspend the purchasing policy for the reasons that I had stated earlier. And just take a vote to do that.
Does that have a separate motion?
It would be a separate motion.
Yes.
Done first, obviously.
Do we have a motion for that?
We do.
So I'll make a motion to suspend the purchasing policy for, to approve this.
For Dirigo.
I'll second that.
Second goes to Sean. So the request is to suspend the purchasing policy for this one contract, and the stated reason is that it is a great value. The cost proposed is lower than we would expect. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion? It is unanimous. So then, my second question back on the original motion from Carol. How much money does the town have in reserve for this revaluation?
Roughly $120,000.
Okay, so we have all of this money to pay for the $101,500 for field work and data entry. And then there's negotiation and determining amounts for some other work upon completion. So it seems that we're probably covered.
Yeah, I think we certainly will be. The other work is the development of that schedule. And that's going to follow, I think, and the amount of work involved with that will follow the revaluation and the work done on all those parcels. And it's 70 a parcel, and we right now have just under $1,400 or just over $1,400. I estimated, for the purpose of this contract, around $1,450. And in the version the select board will sign, I do have an asterisk that clarifies that and says that this number is an estimate. The controlling is the per parcel price.
Great. And then my other question, is this going to be a rolling implementation of increased value? Or will everyone be increased at the end at the same time?
I'll let David answer that. I know the answer, but I want him to talk a little.
Maybe it's not all increases, but will the changes come?
David Ledoux, your assessing agent. Yes, as we discover errors, omissions, we will make those changes. I've been doing that for, it's been five years already. And so I came across one just in the last year. There was one property that was well over $100,000 that the town had been missing out on for some seven or eight years. That's the type of thing that we'll be looking for. I did a program like this with your former assessing agent, Jackie Robbins, up in Winterport. We did a three-year program up there, and it was very successful.
So.
So we will, as we find the property that's not being assessed, we'll put it on the books. If properties have been destroyed, torn down, they'll come off the books. But everybody is going to be on the same pricing schedule until that schedule changes. Give you an example, over the last four years, we have done four incremental increases across the board. In the end, we envision a brand-new pricing schedule for all the individual components of the different properties that we have valued. So it'll be all at once when it's revalued.
Okay, except for gross errors, either changes positive or negative, the whole schedule will go into effect at the conclusion.
Correct.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the motion to approve this contract? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
I may make one point just a little bit about my team, if I may. I spent 39 years at the state, almost all of it with Property Tax Division, ended up with the director for the last 12 years of my career. My partners, one of them is the assessor in Lisbon, one is the assessor in Oakland, and one is also a former director from Maine Revenue Services and is currently a town manager. So I'm very proud of the resumes.
That's quite a team.
It is.
We'll look forward to working with you, and I hope the residents will as well, and that we'll be very forthright about communications, letting people know what's happening, you know, what parts of town we're working on, when, and how to contact you, and so people don't feel like anything's going on that they don't understand.
Very good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we will move on to item 24-035, Consider Special Event Liquor Licenses for Kent's Hill School and the YMCA. And I see that we have, I can't read the name.
Emily.
Emily from Kent's Hill School with us.
And that's on page 76.
Oh, thank you, Carol.
Hello.
And your volume is up.
Hello.
Hi.
So we have in front of us two different applications for two different dates. The first one is for the Family Fall Weekend on October 13th for an outside event for two to two and a half hours. And we'll have to consider these separately, so we'll just do it that way. There was one thing I couldn't read, Emily, in item nine. I just wasn't sure what it said. No something beyond this point signs are guarded.
Yeah, sure. There'll be no alcohol beyond this point signs. So it's clearly labeled what area parents can have a beverage. This is a family-friendly event, so I don't foresee any parents getting too wild and embarrassing their teenagers. But we'll also have tips, bartenders, as well as just extra safety things in place just in case that were to happen. But I don't suspect for a fall family weekend to get too rowdy.
Okay, thank you. And I assume that underage students or any people will not be allowed during the cocktail hour?
All the teachers are there. We know our kids well enough that that would never fly.
I would take a motion on this first application.
I'll make a motion to accept the application for a liquor's license for Kent's Hill School on October 13th, 2023, from 5:30 p.m. to approximately 8 p.m.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Emily, moving on to your second application. This means you don't have to come to us until the spring, right?
I do this so I don't forget, so yes.
That's perfect. So the second application is for the Holiday on the Hill, which will take place on December 7th from 5:30 to 8. This is not an outside event, so there is no diagram for that. And it's, the same criteria is listed. It's just inside instead of outside. Would someone like to make a motion?
I can make a motion to accept the application for the liquor license for Kent's Hill School for Holiday on the Hill that will be taking place on December 7th from 5:30 p.m. to 8 p.m. That will be taking place on December 7th from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Okay. Eric, I take it I'm signing this one as the board chair?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I will do that before we.
That was presented by the assessing group. And so that's why it's a slightly different signature structure.
Okay, so now we'll go back to our printed agenda.
So we didn't have anybody else from the catering?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, yes.
On page 86.
Lisa's, yes. Thank you very much, Carol. Yes, Lisa's White Flower Catering. There is not anybody online for that. So this application is for an event to take place at the mess hall at 177 North Wayne Road. Is this at a camp, Eric?
Yeah, so this is at the, oh.
Is that the YMCA, isn't it?
No, the group is YMCA.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I can't remember the name of the camp.
Menatoma?
Kirkwald.
Kirkwald.
Kirkwald. And so, and this is a slightly different format. You'll notice that this application is different than the one that Kent's Hill did. Kent's Hill is applying under a civic organization. So the state, of course, has a different application for civic organizations versus a catering company. And so this is one that they had tried to submit earlier for an event that was actually, they wanted to hold last weekend. They didn't give us enough time. And so they actually rescheduled their event so that we would be able to accommodate this for them prospectively. But I don't see any issue why this wouldn't work. They did provide a photo of the premises and the information required for us to get in touch with them, so.
Okay. So is there anyone who would like to make a motion? I don't know if I said the date was on October 7th from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the YMCA.
I can keep rolling. I'd like to make a motion for Lisa's White Flower Catering for a liquor license for the use by the YMCA at a local camp on October 7th from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Is there a second? I have a second, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Now I'll go back to the agenda as printed. Thank you, Carol. Okay. So we are at appointments, reappointments and resignations. Item 24-030 is consider the resignation of Nate Rudy from the Board of Appeals. This is back at page, I don't know, 30 something. Nate Rudy is having a change of employment and can no longer serve on the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to regretfully accept Nate Rudy's resignation from the Board of Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion to regretfully accept the resignation of Nate Rudy from the Board of Appeals. Is there any further discussion? I wish him well in his next endeavor. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. The next item of business is to review the administrative calendar for the select board and the town manager. We had a draft at our last meeting. Eric, can you tell us what may have changed since then?
So the, what we had the last meeting was actually an old, old version of this from, I think, 2016. And so I updated it with more, the most relevant activity that I saw the select board conducting on a monthly basis and tried to break it out so it was a bit more comprehensible. Having a category for required meeting items, things that we would handle as an agenda item on a routine basis, on a monthly basis. And then also at the end, as a standing agenda item. Then we also have a section or a column for workshops and public events. Some of these are similar to where they were in the past. Some of them are the exact same location. But my attempt here was to break up the workloads that we didn't have too much following in any one month, which is hard to do because we do a lot and the board does a lot, so thank you for that. But it gets crowded sometimes, so we try to spread it out. The third column is for quarterly review and reporting, which is to kind of focus on things that you might want to see on a quarterly basis. I did add the idea of having our code officer report quarterly because that is one of the primary things I think that we should be paying attention to at the board level is say the bill, the number of building permits in town and any property issues. I know there's been an interest in some of that stuff. I think it's best coming from the code officer as opposed to the planning board. So he can give a quarterly update if the board has an interest in that. And then also the comprehensive plan review is something that we've traditionally done quarterly. That was effectively suspended while we were working on the comprehensive plan update. Now that that update is complete, we can check in quarterly again and make sure that we're doing the things that we want to do. Again, none of it's mandatory, but the select board has played a role in the past in helping to guide some of those activities and making sure that things that are happening in town are consistent with that plan, which is really the ultimate priority. So that's my summary of what we have. This is, of course, I can add, I can remove, I can change the format, but this is the first pass at putting some of those important actions for the select board all in one spot.
Does anyone have any comments on this? Yes, Carol?
I just have one. Under July, the second line during the month of July, regular meeting items. So all of those are something we do monthly? Is that what that means?
That's all things we do in July.
Okay. So such as board and committee appointments, I think that's what we were just talking about. Isn't that something that should be done at every meeting if there? Is that what that is, is board and committee appointments?
Not exactly, so what we have.
We need another word in there.
Annual or renewals, I guess.
Yeah, that would be like our renewals.
Gotcha.
Because you know how we went through that list and we have all those folks that go June 30 to July, or July, yeah, June 30 to July, July 1 to June 30, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Renewal, I'll make sure I add that, that's an important word.
Yeah, on the board and committee ones, yeah. On, on the first two lines for both, that would be useful, I think.
Okay.
All right.
Think it looks great, Eric. Thanks.
Should help with planning and programming and all that?
Yeah, I like it.
I agree.
Catherine, if you have anything else, I'll talk to you after.
Whoa, did I just get shut down?
That is really like a teacher. Okay, I'll just talk to you after class.
I, I was, I was prefaced, do you see how I gave him a compliment first, then I was going to add a piece, but you know, he just attacked you, so. But I was just going to say, I, I would love a piece of this that highlights our maintenance schedule a little. And, and sort of when we should be starting to think about certain activities or certain things that come up more often, like opening the beach, starting mowing certain areas, brush, things that are routinely part of the crew's responsibility, but that if we were ever gonna, if there are committees in town that are interested in having cleanup days or volunteer opportunities, those would be things we could look at and say, well, there would be, the town is planning their beach opening cleanup days or something like that, in fact, that they could tag along with our maintenance crew for some of that stuff, especially the high school, middle school, Kent's Hill School, always looking for things like that as well.
So that's sounding to me like a fourth column.
Yeah. Which was not even Catherine's idea.
Yes.
We'll see what we can do with that. I think a lot of that stuff is variable. It depends on which teachers organizing it with our openings. I think the things with the cemeteries, opening and closing the cemeteries, that's practically, I think that's in the ordinance. The beach, pretty traditional, so I can, I see what you're getting at. I think most of it's going to be pretty easy to put in. Some of it we're probably just going to have to guess and recognize.
Of course.
It might not be that accurate.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think had the, the column title should say something about its nebulous or it's, it's approximate dates. Right, approximate timing.
Or you could not do it. It was just a suggestion.
No, I, I, I think it's a good idea. It's a good idea. I just wanted to make sure that we got reasonable expectations, right? For maintenance and.
But to me, it's sounding like the way we should be doing business is working it out. Eric, I think this is wonderful and it looks like you can take out some of the lines even because we didn't fill them all up. That's great.
Well, I wanted to give you room.
No, I think it's, it's wonderful. And I, I think if we had talked about posting this on, probably on the select board page, then that way everyone can see it, including select board members, especially since it's something we have to kind of expect to come up. That would be great.
Yes.
I don't think we need any formal approval, just our thanks to you for doing this. We appreciate it. I know that for whoever is going to be chair and vice chair, this is really helpful so that we don't forget things and get surprised. That's really worthwhile. Thanks a lot. Okay. Moving on to our next item of business, conduct a second reading of the Reedfield Select Board Meeting Public Participation Guidelines. I don't think we changed anything last meeting. We had a couple of questions from Carol. I think we answered them, but I don't know that they were satisfactory answers. So does anybody have any concerns or comments, changes they'd like to see? Yes, Carol?
So yes, I still, I'm finding it here. Where was that?
Now I have to turn my talking around again.
Sorry.
Obviously, we need to put something in this that says it will be revised annually since we're listing the select board members
Oh, right, right, right.
At the beginning of the document. And if we change things like when we meet or where we meet, we would have to update that. So this isn't one of those policies that can go for 10 years before we look at it again.
I'm sorry.
If you'd like, Carol, we can move on to the next item so you have time to look for it and then we'll come back. Does that meet with the approval of the rest of the board?
Yeah, I just want to notify everyone that we're 30 minutes over agenda so far, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just move to extend the meeting till midnight at this point in time?
I just want everyone to, just everyone be mindful where we're at so far.
We started five minutes late and Eric went 15 minutes over, but that's we had questions. The age friendly committee was spot on. You did exactly 15 minutes. It was perfect. So no problem, we'll do the best we can. Alrighty. So we need to conduct a public hearing to discuss a new general assistance ordinance and general assistance maximums. So I need to just look at the, oh, come on, don't do that. Where that is in the agenda. So we are required by the state of Maine to open a, hold a public hearing on the general assistance ordinance adoption and the maximums adoption as well. And so this is time for the public to make comments, not for the board to ask questions. So at this point in time, I will call a public hearing to a close at 8:07. Are there any members of the public who would like to participate in this, make comments on the general assistance maximums and ordinance? If Grace online wants to talk, she can raise her hand, anyone in the audience? There are no comments from the public, so I will call the public hearing to a close at 8:08.
That's the way we do it.
Just wait back 10 minutes there, Sean.
Last time she did that, the email thing went off. I'm like, how'd you do that? Like Fonzie, it hit the table.
Okay, so now it is time for the select board to decide if we want to create our own ordinance or if we want to adopt the state general assistance ordinance. And also to authorize the town manager, I believe, to sign that, or do we all sign these, Eric?
You sign that.
I, I think 99% of municipalities, cities and towns in Maine adopt the state because otherwise you're required to spend a lot of money, time and effort to make your own ordinance.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that because it seemed that way to me. So it seems really pretty straightforward about what we should do here.
I'd make a motion to adopt the state's general assistance ordinance and maximum as presented.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion in a second to sign both documents, the general assistance ordinance and the general assistance maximums. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. We did that in a minute and a half. Okay. Not that we're counting or anything here.
Whenever it's fast, you always like point it out. When it just drags on way past the limit, you just gloss over that, you know?
You like that, huh? Accentuating the positive, isn't that what I started out?
Now you guys have wasted two minutes.
Okay. So that took care of item 24-031, moving on to 24032. Where did my mouse go? Okay, there it is.
Should we go back to Carol? You ready?
I am scouring this and I saw it when I read through it and keep on.
So we will consider an update to the town's FOAA policy. From what I can see online, these are dated items that are being changed, adding in an acronym of FOAA and changing the contact person and title, really. So instead of calling it FOAA, calling it the Public Access Officer. Eric, are there any other changes of note?
The only one would be in section four, the form and content of request. I did add a piece because we, I find that tracking forms and documentation are essential for this type of work. Certainly has helped in the past. And so I just wanted to clarify that it's not an obligation, but that I do have the ability to put together an information request form that can help the applicant format and structure their ideas. When it doesn't happen, we oftentimes have to go back and make requests for clarification and things like that. So that's one piece. The other piece is a tracking form. And just to make that kind of the expectation that we're going to manage this actively with this type of tool. So that's the only thing I would add.
So we're asking for clarification to make this more readable and also to make it more time expedient for the applicant as well as for the town by having tracking forms and a request form. There was a note made that the current rate is $25 per hour. That is the state law per hour for time. I would look for someone to make a motion either to approve or not.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated FOAA policy.
I'll second.
Nice job, Dave. Did it. Hopefully.
You didn't have to correct me on that.
Hopefully Dave could hear you because you were really soft.
You weren't sure what you were going to say.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Carol?
I would like to request that there's a second FOAA officer. I would like to request that there's a second FOAA officer, probably an employee of the, of the town hall or of the office. I know that the people working at the town hall in the past were uncomfortable about certain ones involving other employees or whatever. And that's why some backed out of wanting to do that. But I think there are things that, most things can be covered by them without any discomfort or whatever. And Eric would be the backup if there's something they didn't want to be involved in. When I first got, like way at the beginning of my time on the board, I was looking at who does what. And I was like, town manager does a lot. And I reached out to some people, long-term residents of the town going, is that normal? And they go in town, small towns, yeah. But he does a lot. I'm just thinking, and like in light of what's been requested recently, that there are topics that might involve the town manager and the town decision makers or the town committees that might be better handled by somebody in the office. And then Eric would be a backup. But I, all of that in, like everything he does in one person's responsibility, I think this part could be delegated to someone in the office as it was before.
I guess I'll respond first and then Eric, if you want to add something. We changed this last year, I think, to go away from that model. And it, it wasn't because of town employees being uncomfortable with looking into other town employees. It was because of the treatment of the public to the reporting officer. There was a lot of harassment taking place by the FOAA requests. And something along the magnitude of about 90% of the materials that are requested are from the town manager. So the town manager has to report all of that documentation, that great bulk of the documentation. So if that, so if you have person A in charge and they have to go to the town manager to get 90% of the information, and then they have to take that and process it, I think we're doubling up on time in terms of how we're processing. Because we're a small town. That's how, that was the logic that we used when we made this change about a year ago. Anybody else?
That's my memory also. And I think, Eric, my, my sense from talking to you and just about situations when I first got on the board is this seems like a way that works for you. You're comfortable with it?
Yeah, that's a question. Yeah, no, it, it is. And I think it's important enough that it ought to be something that I will look at as a priority. Of course, I do have staff support. And if there are documents and information that employees can gather and review, then that's, that's great.
So this doesn't prevent you from getting staff support?
Not at all, no. No, not at all. And I think it is important too, because oftentimes in dealing with FOA, we end up having to get legal opinions and work with legal review. And so that's something else that I do. So I think that it makes sense for this to be done this way. I think in a lot of towns, the manager is the FOA officer. But at least mid-sized towns, the small towns, it might be different. Big towns, it might be different. But I know it's something that I'm comfortable with and I think it's, it's a good use of my time and skill set in generally knowing about what's going on most every place. It's a value to me and a value to the public, I think, to have someone that can access that information quickly, know who to ask, how to ask, things like that. So, okay. Thank you.
But in the past, in our town, it was always someone else?
It had been the town clerk in the past.
Well, in the recent past, I'm not sure.
No, it's been, I've been in this position for three years now, probably at least. It was, I think before COVID, it was when the harassment started in earnest that we made that switch. But I think it was a wise one, not just because of the harassment, but because of, it seems to work really well this way.
I know there was a need for expediency.
Legally.
So I think I had a motion in a second, did I? I did. And we were on discussion. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to, we already did item 34-033, assessing and revaluation. 24-034 is consider a contract with EcoMaine for recycling services. I think this is actually a contract after the fact. Is that correct, Eric?
Essentially, we don't have really much, you know, say in how this comes to us. I did haggle with them and I was able to get a really small concession on whether, part of the contract says that we pay upfront for recycling, then they give us dividends at a certain point if they make money. And they had tried to say, well, anything less than $10 a ton, we don't pay you dividends. Anything more than that in value, that we do pay you dividends. I said, what do you guys, this, this is foolishness. It's pennies. So let's just do anything over zero. If you make money, then we'd like to have some small, you know, crust of bread. And so we did get a little bit more out of it, but this is effectively, as Catherine said, out of our control. EcoMaine is also the only viable option for recycling and recycling still does, is still a value for residents. I did the analysis before we ever brought this forward to the select board. We save money on every ton of recycling that we send out. It costs the taxpayers less. And that's on average. You know, sometimes it's a little bit more. But we've made money on this deal on average over the past 10 years, beyond the fact that it's a responsible thing to do, wise use of resources, not necessarily even speaking about the environmental benefits, but wise use of resources. So I don't have any issue signing this. EcoMaine's a good partner. I just wish we had more options, but they work and they work well with us. So no concerns here.
And this is a three-year contract?
Yes, and I think it does renew automatically after that. So it will be what we consider evergreen.
Okay.
You say it's an evergreen contract if, at some point in the second year, we decided for whatever reason, some better option come along or whatever. Do we have an option at the end of three years to non-evergreen it?
There's a notice period and we can then.
So I'll make a motion to sign the contract with EcoMaine for recycling services.
I'll second it. So I have a motion for, a motion in a second to approve the contract with EcoMaine as provided in the packet. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Oh, we have just made up such a lot of time.
We're hanging again.
Now, Steve, would you really want me to say to somebody, you know, you're really talking too long, you have to shut it down here?
No, I understand, Catherine. I just like to give you hard time. It's good for you.
Okay. Oh, there's a lot of pages there. It was really nice that this came up in our packet because I needed to write an article for the messenger and it was due today. And I said to Kristin, hey, how about taking page 65 from our packet?
I found my place and I'm sorry. Two other places where I thought it was and then.
All right, let me just.
One sentence.
Get to where we're going to be and then we can go back.
And I can, it can wait.
So we're going back, right?
Oh, no. Yes, if I can get my mouse to actually keep going.
What page is that, Carol?
29.
All right. So when we return, we're going to be on page, oh my goodness. We're going to be on page 89. And we're going back to 28, Carol?
29.
29.
While you guys are running there, one thing that we are able to do with the, the Sobi software is create something like an index or linking so that we can have a PDF that you can go from the, the, the agenda and then link to the items. So we'll be able to do that. I think we can do it now, but this will make it easier. That's a goal.
It's a night of signatures.
Aspirational.
Okay, Carol.
Okay. So page 29. It's the rules governing public comment periods. Point one, last sentence. No comments will be accepted anonymously or through another party, including through select board members. The reason I didn't like that the first time we discussed this, as I mentioned then, there are topics that someone might want to bring up for discussion, but afraid of a backlash against them personally, socially, against their business, they're not comfortable doing that if it's a controversial topic. I also understand there's other local towns recently that have been in the news about this very same thing and they're addressing their approach to this. I believe one of them was Hollowell was in the news just recently. And one of the examples I gave, which is probably the more strongly one, is the COVID policy and the fireman that some people want to keep having it addressed. I understand the reason why it's not, but they're afraid of backlash if that policy does change. So since there's other bigger towns than us addressing the same thing, because it's come up in other areas and towns much larger than us, can we just for now have that sentence stricken that nobody can bring up a topic anonymously? Because I think there's a real hesitancy on the town, people that have been in the town for a long time and have a certain reputation or a business owner or an employee. That, that's why I would like that one single solitary sentence to be stricken.
Comments?
Can I, just a clarification for myself. So for someone who is in the position of being worried about the ramifications for their business or personal reasons and if they brought something up, they still have the right to, like, they could, for example, talk to the town manager or talk to a select board member, right?
Absolutely.
So this is just preventing anonymous comments in a public meeting, right?
Right.
Am I understanding that?
That's how it's written.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Because they would like it discussed in a meeting setting. And it might be a comment on a topic we have on the agenda. It's an additional question, something we may not have heard of or thought of.
Just a question for you, Carol. The Hollowell thing, what, what, what did they do? Do you know what they did?
It's still, it's, I heard it was in the KJ like yesterday as Hollowell and another town was just in the news about this very same thing, that they were having the same thing where people were hesitant to come out and be identified posing a certain opinion. And so it's kind of not unique to us.
Sorry, the one thing I'd heard in the news recently was that Hollowell was actually in other towns going, not allowing anonymous Zoom meetings because of horrible comments coming through and things like that. Not that that would happen here, but.
It has happened here.
That was what I heard about Hollowell on the news. So I hadn't realized there was something else where they were kind of balancing the need to have accountability with anonymity.
Well, the most recent article was about Hollowell being attacked by anonymous people and it was disrupting their meeting and shutting down their meeting.
I totally agree with that. I don't, I don't think ours have been that. I think it's just been people with, and these are long-term residents sometimes who have a lot of knowledge, a lot of history, a lot of, you know, the way things were done in the past and maybe things have changed, so.
I think the, the idea is that it, we conduct all of our business in public. And in public means that we are present and we are responsible for what we say. And if I'm uncomfortable with something as a resident, there are ways that I can ask and present my situation or my opinion without it coming back on me, I would think. I think anybody can raise, can ask a question. You don't have to be argumentative about it or demeaning to people because you disagree. I know that there's a lot of that going on in our greater society, but I'd like to think that here we can keep this friendly, as the age friendly committee was talking about tonight, getting to know your neighbors and having good, healthy conversations. I just think it's important that we not do things anonymously. I'd be certainly willing to talk about this more in the future if, you know, if something developed like you were talking about from Hollowell, that they came up with some policy about allowing anonymous things, we could look at that and see if that would make sense for Reed Field. But right now, everybody always is asked, and I think it's part of state law, if you're like at a town meeting, you have to state where you're from because you have to show that you're a resident, because non-residents don't get to speak or vote at town meeting unless they're invited and recognized by the body, so.
The way I took it when I read it was simply like a safety net, like you said, so you don't have people from, who knows even if they're from Reed Field just coming on and making comments they shouldn't be making.
And they, they.
Without putting a face to it.
And we have had it. It just, we, our chats don't always pop up or something. And we've definitely had meetings, whether it be a planning board, select board, that there have been comments made by people that don't identify themselves that we shouldn't need to acknowledge or entertain, in my opinion. So if they're not willing to identify who they are, where they live, as part of the town and town governance, so.
I think, I really do think it's important that in a public meeting, people are, cannot make an anonymous comment. I mean, it's a public meeting. You know, if they, if someone has a concern and they are concerned about how it's going to be received, I think that there are other ways for them to do that, to surface that concern and get it talked about. You know, someone, if a, if a constituent called me and said, this is really a big concern. I'm a little worried about, I would try to raise that at the appropriate level, either with Eric or at a board meeting if it was something that was, you know, necessary to discuss at a board meeting. But I just feel like pretty strongly that we shouldn't be accepting anonymous comments at, in a public meeting.
Okay, just a little addendum to that. And this goes back to past meetings. So if somebody's online and they're identifying themselves and they have a question, I think in the past, someone just answered that. But if questions are raised online and people are identifying themselves, shouldn't that question be asked of us and commented on?
Yes. If it's, if my name is Resident X, then no, because that's anonymous.
Right.
If my name is Catherine Woodsum and I make a comment, you know, I live at Main Street Reed Field, then yes. And I, I think it would be, I'm not sure how Dennis was doing that before because I wasn't involved in that.
But the, yeah, I mean, I was on the chat sometimes when we were having some contentious meetings and it was disgruntled taxpayer asking questions or negative comments. And we never addressed those typically. But if there was real questions asked, Dennis would stay.
Then they should be voiced in, I mean, if we see them on the screen, then they should be voiced for the audio, correct?
I don't think that happens very often. A lot of people were saying they were on the chat and the question, like a question would be answered online and never brought. Is what I was told.
I would have to see it to know. As I said, I wasn't doing it, so you weren't here.
I guess the question is going forward.
Let's do that.
If someone has a question and it's something different or unique or whatever, if they're willing to identify themselves.
No, absolutely, Carol. Yeah, I think 100% that should be done.
Yeah, Steve's going to monitor that chat.
Well, that's a scary thought. Mr. Technology.
So I did volunteer for it, but to be honest, I forgot tonight, so. But I know, I know Bill or Liz would have told me. And I don't think Grace has had any questions today.
Okay. And just to be clear, this is a policy where we're setting guidelines. And so policies can be changed. So if something comes up that causes us to say, I think we need to reconsider part of this policy, we will do that. That's, I think that's the way we all want to treat things, so.
That's awesome.
Okay. So for this second reading, are there any other comments? I guess I should just state that we are back on item.
24-26.
Thank you, Sean. If not, I would entertain a motion?
I would make a motion, implement Reed Field's like board meeting public participation guideline. like board meeting, public participation guideline.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Or opposed?
Just for one reason.
Carol Doreenboss dissenting. Dave, I don't know if I've told you that before, but we have to do that so that if it wants to be reopened, we know who is eligible to reopen according to Roberts rules. Okay, twenty-four oh thirty-six. We're only 10 minutes behind schedule right now. That's good. Consider the award of a ditching culvert and shoulder work RFP. We had the entire RFP, and then there was one page, I believe, at the end. And this was at page eighty-nine beginning. This is for various culverts. And then the other work was additional ditching, shoulder grading, and edge dam removal. Eric, what can you tell us?
I'll be brief. We have a lot of work in town that needs to be completed. This is our first pass at hitting the priority work. We, a lot of the stuff is reported by property owners. A number of areas were addressed as a priority because maintenance staff or even our contractors identified issues. And so we put together an RFP, request for proposals, had that issued, received proposals last Thursday. The road committee met that evening, reviewed the proposals, and made a recommendation. I support the recommendation of the road committee also. And that recommendation was to go with the low bid and local contractor John Cushing. We were very appreciative of the fact that we had several contractors express interest in five bid. That was good. And some from nearby, some from further away. But it was a good result, and we expect we'll be able to get this work done this fall, which is important considering the weather, the patterns that we've had. We want to get this stuff hardened off and cleaned up so that when the water comes this fall and next spring, that we're able to handle it. And again, money upfront to do the repair work saves money on the other end for emergency maintenance. So that's my recommendation, is that the board accept the proposal from John Cushing for...
Sixty-eight four thirty.
Thank you, sixty-eight four thirty. And yeah, that's where I'm at.
Can I ask a question to point a clarity here?
No.
Okay, great. So the question is...
That's payback.
And you know what, Catherine, I think I know the answer. If there is a road listed or involved here that is stated private, the reason we would be working on that is because of the relation it has to this town-owned road, correct?
Yes, so it's always the connections. We don't do work on private roads. We do work on roads that have butt or join into our roadway system and that fall within our right of way. So the town typically has about 25 feet from the center line on a traditional road. Most of those connections fall within there. The town is obligated to provide access to private property and access to private roads with culverts. And so that's why you see culverts at the ends of private roads. It's because they connect to public roads.
Thanks.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from John Cushing for the culvert and ditching RFP.
In the amount of?
In the amount of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. I'll just make a point of clarity in case people are wondering about the very relaxed nature of our meeting tonight. But the reason any of us ask questions that we may already know the answer to is to allow the public to hear that question so that they have more information. It's in an effort for transparency.
And I'd like to make a public statement that I do understand that, I'd just like to yank your chain once more.
That's absolutely okay by me. Okay, item twenty-four dash zero three seven, review the draft fiscal year 2425 budget and warrant scheduled document, which everyone except Dave has seen before. Dave may have seen it, but not as a board member. So...
It's color-coordinated.
So to bring back my inner Dennis, it is nicely color-coordinated, which he always really appreciated. So blue is for select board, and green is also for select board because we will be meeting jointly with the budget committee. And you see that there are one, two, three, four of those meetings. It looks like we're not quite as heavily meetinged as in past years. It seemed to me as I was reading through this, so I appreciate that. It's very clearly noted what committees and departments are meeting on what days. We have a meeting scheduled, wow, really early this year, I think.
Relatively, so we did get feedback. There are two things that are different on this, Catherine. It's actually one more meeting than last year, maybe less than we had two or three years ago. But I did add a meeting. But to your first point about a meeting early, we are trying to focus and front-load the capital planning discussion. So that's happening earlier, goal-setting, all those other things. We're trying to get this moved along quickly so we can get that work done, communicate more effectively with the boards and committees, and again, focus on capital. The meeting that was added was actually a second public hearing after the deadline.
Yeah.
So, and that was in response to concerns that folks had despite, you know, there's a lot of work here by a lot of people, but it's not always readily available. And so we have a few different deadlines. Because of our voting structure with the I O S T ballots, it really pushes things back. But we also have the need to present reliable, accurate information. So in an attempt to kind of combat some of the misinformation that had been presented in years past, we had held our public hearing shortly before the vote. So the bulk of people that would be responding and present, if they chose to be, would be getting good, reliable information from the town in, you know, within a week to 10 days of the vote so that people couldn't just put out misinformation that the town doesn't have the financial resources to combat or the schedule to combat. We meet once a month, maybe twice a month. So, but that also put us in a spot where we weren't necessarily able to give all of the exact same information to folks who were voting absentee. So this second meeting has been added so that before any absentee vote is cast, that we can have a first public hearing to talk about this information so everybody gets the same information twice. So worst-case scenario, someone misses the first one, they can go to the second one. But it'll be a chance to have more public engagement and information and keep everybody honest, which is really important in discussing these policy issues because we've had, again, we've had unfortunately issues in the past. But we have an obligation to provide people with good information consistently. It's more work for the select board and more work for the budget committee, but I think it's valuable. So that's the reason we have that second public hearing once everything is finalized.
Thank you. Carol, I think that was an issue that you had raised last year. So thank you, Eric, for addressing that. I want you to be sure that you're hearing that you were heard.
Thank you.
In looking at this, I noticed that we have select board meeting dates assigned for us already?
Yeah, that's basically to make all this work.
Yep, and that's fine, but just noting, everybody might want to take hold of this. And if this could, we don't really need to approve this. This is your document.
I mean, it's always helpful if you give it a nod, but unless you disagree, we'll go with it.
So this should, this should be posted, this should be posted probably in several places, at least in the select board and in the budget and on the town calendar on the website. Feel free to go right ahead and put all those dates in for both, all those committees, right through town meeting.
Great.
And then it's accessible by everybody, and that transparency just increases. Is the board in agreement? Do we want to make a motion, or are we okay with this schedule?
Ahmad.
Ahmad, Carol, Sean.
Yeah, hold on, I'm just checking one last date.
And please make as many of the meetings as you can, as is always the way we try to do business. And just let us know in advance if you can't, you know, like 3/11 and 3/13. So that's a Monday and a Wednesday. And for some of us, that might not work twice in one week, but...
Oh, good. I just wanted to check school vacations and stuff.
Yeah, it's, I think I missed all the religious holidays.
You missed everything.
And I didn't schedule a meeting on Valentine's Day this year.
Wow.
Stop giving me a hard time for that.
Who's giving you a hard time like that? That's a holiday?
Steve.
Who knows, we have an agreement about that.
Okay, so we are now only 11 minutes behind, five of which was from the beginning of the meeting. So I think we're doing great. We have an executive session scheduled. Do we want to do the bond now?
Yes.
So if we don't have anything after our executive session, we don't have to actually do anything else?
This is just that resolution stating that there was the issue with the difference between the 6.5 and the six text versus the actual number in that original document. A lot of words for a simple fix, but there's a signature page.
And do we need to vote on this or just sign it?
It's probably better if you vote on it.
So could I have a motion to approve the...
Resolution of the select board?
To correct the authorization?
Okay, I got it right in front of me, so I'll make the motion. I move to approve the resolution to correct the authorization of the sale of three hundred and forty-eight thousand and fifty-seven dollars in genuine obligation bonds to the town, of the town.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. And if we could have a motion for executive session?
I'm gonna take a piss.
Do we have to jury first?
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and invite the town manager pursuant to 1 M R S A, section 405 subsection 6A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, sorry, I'm signing a paper, to enter executive session to discuss a personnel issue. And did you invite the town manager?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? No, we're going downstairs.
We'll all be the door.
All those in favor? Unanimous, okay. So we will enter executive, we will leave now to enter executive session downstairs, and we will come back to conclude the meeting at the end of that.
If you really need to stand.
We have to be on.
All right, just for you.
Do the gavel and then announce.
Do the gavel.
Can I have a motion to leave executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to leave executive session. All those in favor? We are back in regular session. Is there any further business before the board this evening?